I fixed these two up. She's a judge. He's my eye doctor. He was the best.
Good afternoon.
He was my law.
The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the January 11th, 2023 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
(Clerk) To the flag of the highest states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda. So moved by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. And now we have the approval of the minutes. I need a motion for the unapproved Board Meeting minutes of December 14th, 2022.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sebigny. Are there any comments or corrections? Ms. Emily?
On page three, I would like to revise the statement in the second to last sentence of the main body paragraph. All freshmen and sophomores are welcome to apply. Can we please change that to all freshmen and sophomores currently involved in Student Government Association at their home schools are welcome to apply? Thank you.
Any other corrections? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, we will have the Carroll County Student Government report.
Good evening, Board members. I apologize for not being able to make it today to this Board meeting. I had an appointment that I had to make. Thank you very much, Emily, for participating. We are currently planning our February General Assembly, which will be happening on February 15th at Century High School. We are incredibly thankful to Century High School to lend us the facilities for this General Assembly. This GA is primarily for our SHROB elections and is reserved for the high school SGA members that attend our February General Assembly. They will listen to the speeches and go through a question and answer session with the candidates. We will also vote during this General Assembly. Please look forward for more information coming out. Additionally, my Vice President, Flamatu Fafana, has been working with Grace Minikowski, the President of Calvert Association of Student Councils, on a virtual legislative workshop that will teach students how to write legislation. This has been a project that she has put a lot of energy into, and I'm incredibly happy to announce that this virtual meeting will be happening tomorrow, January 12th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. This workshop is open to all students across the state who are interested in having this voice and heard on the state level, or who would just like more information about the operations regarding legislation. Also, Delegate Brian Crosby will be in attendance. Many students have already registered, but if you're interested in registering, please let Flay or Grace know by registering through the CCSGA Instagram @carol.sga or reach out to your advisors or school presidents. On top of that, I have been arranging president meetings with SGA presidents across the county to share ideas and discuss current projects that we are working on. We are inviting high school presidents for CCSGA executive board meetings in order to get the outreach and transparency out to all students over the county. I would like to thank our charity and outreach coordinator for organizing our upcoming charity project. This charity project will be in March and focus on Carroll County's own Shepherd Staff Homeless Shelter. Each school will have the option to choose from four different drives: emergency meals/snacks, toiletry items, household items, and blankets/slogs. March is often a time when homeless shelters experience a lack in donations, so contributions from all CCPS middle and high schools will make a big difference. More information is being sent out to your SGA advisors after the holidays, so please look out for more information in February. Finally, SHROB applications are still currently open. Those applications have been released to advisors, principals, and presidents, so if eligible freshmen or sophomores are interested in this position, please reach out to these individuals. Of course, I'm sure that Emily will be able to expand this on the role of SHROB a little bit more, but I'd like to reiterate a few things. This position is open for freshmen and sophomores only, and it has a two-year commitment. In the first year of your term, you serve as SHROB-elect, which is the position that Sahithia Sudhakar is currently in. In the following year, you will actually sit on the Board of Education as SHROB, as Emily is doing. This is an incredibly important role, and we all know that there are many students out there who are wholly capable of the responsibilities that come with being SHROB. That being said, applications are due on January 27th, and the application is open everywhere. Feel free to reach out to anyone previously mentioned, Emily, Sahi, or me, for more information. Lastly, CCSGA updating the voting process for SHROB last year, and all high school students will be able to vote for SHROB this year through a primary election after the General Assembly. Please keep an eye out all high school students for this voting ballot that will be held virtually. Those are all the updates I have for this meeting. Thank you very much for listening, and I will see everybody in February.
Thank you. At this time, we will have public participation. Ms. Pataglia.
In orderly to have, I'm sorry, to have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the Board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the Board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or U.S. mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question and answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and Board reserves the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is to be expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The Board has a scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15 p.m. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the Board retains their discretion to allow additional speakers as it deems appropriate. The Board is allowing no more than one hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for Board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meetings. In lieu of signs or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or the Board members. And we only have one speaker this evening, Ms. McCullough.
Thank you for all that. I'm back, and I'm all by myself. Good evening, Commissioner Garin, Superintendent McCabe, and members of the Board of Education. I am Teresa Basler McCullough, a retired, 38-year veteran teacher with Carroll County Public Schools. I'm here to encourage you to permit retirees to remain on the Vision and Dental Plan after the 18-month period expires through COBRA. Please keep in mind that there's many retirees who currently substitute, volunteer, and work as hourly's. Their dedication and loyalty remains as they continue to enhance and enable what we do for students. Not only is there no cost to CCPS with this plan, but there's no impact to the taxpayer. Clearly, a win-win situation. Furthermore, Stephanie Rowan has repeatedly pointed out, this would also be less paperwork for CCPS payroll than what is currently in place. Thank you for your consideration in permitting retirees to remain on the Vision and Dental Plan after the 18-month period expires through COBRA. Of course, retirees will pay for this plan, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will have our first employee group.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Garin. I am Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing assistants, clericals, and LPNs across Carroll County Public Schools. Since becoming President of CASE on July 1st, I have spoken about the members of our bargaining unit and the critical roles they play in the success of our school system. Personally, what began over 23 years ago for me as an instructional assistant has exponentially expanded into a career requiring extensive background knowledge in educational curriculum, interventions, and most importantly, student emotional, behavioral, and mental health. During my time in CCPS, I worked two jobs for over 12 years and three jobs for 14 years. During this time, I was also a mom of three who volunteered for extracurricular parent groups and attended college when I could. You might wonder why I speak about my story. For the past year and a half, I've had the privilege of being a member of the MSEA ESP Organizing Committee. During the past nine months, our committee members have traveled across the state to listen to the stories of other educational support professionals. I readily found that my story was not unique. Many in our professions love what we do, but find ourselves having to work more than one job to be financially independent. Staffing and workload was also a major concern, with many being asked to step into other positions outside their classifications because of the current staffing shortages. We also heard, as I mentioned last month, of the significant increase in stress among these employees because of the increase in student behaviors and resulting staff injuries. All of these things are being experienced by employees who are among the lowest paid here in our county and the other counties in Maryland. Many ESPs across the state have seen the focus in our counties zeroed in on financial constraints of the blueprint for Maryland education and what that will mean for school and county budgets in the foreseeable future. For those who don't have detailed knowledge of this landmark legislation, I ask you to realize and think about the fact that education support professionals were ultimately not included in this legislation. So as the result of listening to those stories here in our county and across the state, on October 22nd at the MSEA Representative Assembly in Ocean City, our committee unveiled the MSEA ESP Bill of Rights. There are 10 components to this bill, to include the need for a living wage, affordable healthcare for all who qualify, career advancement opportunities by providing access to meaningful professional development for all, workload and staffing which allows ESPs to excel in their assigned positions, and a safe and healthy work environment, to name just some of the components. So in closing, I ask for you to keep these hardworking, dedicated professionals and the true scope of their positions in mind as Carroll County Public Schools looks at how to continue to best support our students and all of those who work with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, Board members, Commissioner. I am Celeste Jordan, President of CCEA. Happy New Year. As an educator, Happy New Year to me is the end of August, celebrate it with brand-new school supplies. But the fireworks are nice, too. I live in Hanover, it's a fireworks show. I was happy to see many of you at the Carroll Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast last week, the State of the County, also hosted by the Chamber, as well as today's event. CCPS was well-represented at both events. It is important to hear from our state and county representatives as we begin a new legislative session. Chamber President Mike McCollum spoke of the importance of building relationships with people. It reminded me of when I read the diary of President Reagan, and he spoke about his relationship with Speaker Tip O'Neill. They disagreed often, but still worked towards a common goal and were willing to have discussions to further that goal. Yes, I'm aging myself that I know those two people. I sent you an email today on behalf of our own Government Relations Committee asking for dates you're available for our local lobby night that we have done for the past several years with you and the Board of Commissioners. In the past, we've had great conversations and discussions. We have a common goal. We both want CCPS to be the best place for students to learn and for educators to work. The blueprint is not perfect, but I believe if we work together, CCPS will continue to be a great school system. Cindy Porter just spoke about the MSEA ESP Bill of Rights. At our December Representative Assembly meeting, CCEA voted to endorse the Board Bill of Rights. We will be supporting CASE in any way that we can. We hope that you will join us and join the State Superintendent, who has already endorsed the ESP Bill of Rights. Our CASE family has a vital role in CCPS, and we would not be able to function without them. Have a good night.
Thank you, Celeste. At this time, we will have Board Member update. Emily?
On December 21st, I attended the Budget Work Session that prepared us for the upcoming discussions and decisions, so thank you all to those involved in putting that together. Recently, throughout December, I have been presenting at different high schools on the SHROB application, what that application looks like, and the role of SHROB. So I presented at Century High School on December 16th and Werners Mill on the 20th. I will also be presenting at many other high schools this week and next week, so please be sure to attend your local high school's SGA General Assemblies if you are interested as a freshman or sophomore who is currently in SGA. Please remember to see your SGA advisor, or your SGA president, or your principal for the application, which is due on January 27th. Additionally, on my Instagram @ccpsrobb, I have been posting a bundle of different information regarding the application process and how to, some different advice and insight as to how to progress through that, as well as what the role looks like. In the upcoming week, I will also be collaborating with Sahithia Sudhakar, which is our current SHROB-elect, to answer questions regarding what the role of SHROB-elect versus SHROB looks like, to hopefully answer some of students' questions. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia?
First of all, Happy New Year. We're 2023, and this mama is extremely happy because it is officially now senior time for my seniors, so I'm very excited to get everything started for her. And for all our seniors, it is now crunch time for you to fill out all your scholarships, so get the kraken, because those things need to be put in. Had some good activities. We had the Central Office Party here, and we also had a work session a couple days after that. Today, we had our joint meeting with the county commissioners, which went very, very well. And also today, I started my next college class, Introduction to Social Sciences, so I'm very excited to dive into more aspects, not just psychology, but all the other pieces that go along with that. Some upcoming events, you know, there's a lot of career and technology, various events and activities coming up. We have our CAC meeting towards the end of the month. There's been a lot of talk lately, especially regarding the football player that suffered cardiac arrest two Mondays ago, which much of the nation saw. So Reese Fire Hall is doing CPR trainings. So their next CPR training is January 31st at 7:00 p.m. It's $15 to get your certification, so you know, if you want to get your CPR certification, reach out to the Reese Fire Hall to sign up. And also getting a lock zone trained as well, you can contact the Health Department. The International Thesbian Society, Manchester Valley's team is competing, January 13th and 14th, so I wanted to also just say good luck to all those that are competing. And Man Valley will be holding a performance of what they're doing at the ITS competition on January 27th and 28th at 7:00 p.m. at Man Valley, so go ahead and hopefully you can check that out. And 4H signups are underway, so if you're in 4H or looking into signing up for 4H, contact Maryland Extension Office and see what club would benefit you.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey?
Thank you. On the 19th, I also attended the Office, Central Office Holiday Party, and it was great to sort of fellowship with Central Office staff that day. On the 21st of December, the Budget Work Session. January 3rd, the Legislative Kickoff. And on January 6th, I had the opportunity to present and interact with Mrs. Eccles Teacher Academy of Maryland classes on the role of school board members. It's always a pleasure to interact with students, and I must say that they were very engaged in discussing the role of school board members and topics of interest. And today, when I walked into the conference room, I had received these two nice thank you notes from Mrs. Eccles TAM classes, and they have nice messages, and of course, their names or signatures. So again, wonderful, wonderful opportunity. And again, it was great because again, the class is now located in the new part of the Career and Technology Center, so it's just always pleasing to walk into, you know, that facility. On the 10th of January, again, as has been mentioned, I was at the State of the County presentation by the county commissioners. Later on that day, I met with MAB's staff member and the Conference Program Committee co-chair as we began to plan our upcoming meeting with the Conference Program Committing. And I will share that I have been asked to be co-chair of our conference again this year. And earlier today, a part of the joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Whistler?
Hi, good afternoon, rather. Again, not to repeat what's already been said, but again, I also attended the Central Office Holiday Party on December 19th. It was a really great way to meet the staff and the dedicated individuals that do so much for our schools, and I really appreciate that initial visit with so many of the staff. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast on January 3rd and had a great deal of interaction with our state legislators, and of course, one of the big topics of discussion related to Blueprint. So I look forward to them working on our behalf at the state level. I also attended on the 3rd of January our state attorney's swearing-in ceremony in the courthouse. Congratulations to our new state's attorney, Mr. Haven Shoemaker. Also, on the 5th of January, I attended the Agri Breakfast at Barger's Restaurant with a lot of our local area farmers and the farming community. They voiced a lot of interest in the Blueprint and how it would affect them, especially how it related to FFA courses and classes, and how we can incorporate a lot of the needs that they have in their industries, and how Blueprint can possibly play a role in that. I also attended the MAB Legislative Meeting on the 9th of January. Also, on the 10th, the State of the County Session at the Carroll County Arts Center. And of course, today, we participated with the Board of Commissioners in a very meaningful, I think, meaningful session where we had frank discussions on the things facing both the county commissioners and the Board of Education as it relates to funding and implementing Blueprint. I do look forward to this Friday's meeting with our delegation at 3:00 p.m. in the Reagan Room at the County Office Building, where our state legislators will listen to the community and take on board what they want to see implemented down in Annapolis. And I'm already working with two local PTAs to see if we can help bring in funds for playgrounds at Carrolltown Elementary and additional funding for playground at Westminster Elementary. So working with those groups. Again, I will tell you, we are doing so much with regards to this budget session. I have taken a proactive interest in looking at the transportation piece of our budget, and I just want to say thank you so much to the staff and the stakeholders. I realize the time you're putting into this. It is a monumental effort, and again, we're going to do great things for our students and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been to almost everything everybody else said, but I do want to thank the commissioners today. That was a wonderful dialogue. It was probably one of the best meetings we've ever had, and I am really looking forward for another joint meeting. And I think people are really understanding the mandates and what it's going to do here for Carroll County, so I want to thank them again. And at this time, we have Ms. McCabe in her report.
This evening, I would like to congratulate two of our media specialists who were recently featured as the Maryland Association of School Librarians Spotlight Librarian of the Month. Danielle Schwessinger, Media Specialist at Elmer Wolf Elementary School, was recognized for creating an active library space and incorporating coding activities with all grade levels that tap into student excitement about technology while problem solving. She also works closely with the Judy Center, which has a new section in its media center called Come Read With Me. Michael Stensel, Media Specialist at East Middle School, was recognized for teaching about digital citizenship, collaborating with teachers, and supporting students with databases. He also was recognized for the Locked Into Reading Program, an after-school activity where students participate in an escape room that focuses on critical thinking, problem solving, collaboration, and reading. I also would like to congratulate South Carroll High School seniors Paige Lacourt and Erin Zirkle, who will represent Carroll County during the 2023 Legislative Session by serving as pages for the House of Delegates and Senate. The Student Page Program is designed to interest youth in state government, particularly in the proceedings of the Maryland Legislature. The program also has a goal of increasing participation in government and fostering leadership among youth by providing students with worthwhile experiences in state government. And now I would like to thank two area businesses for their donations in support of our students and families. First Financial Federal Credit Union recently made a $5,000 donation to the CCPS Student Support Fund. The donation will give families in the community access to a variety of resources such as clothing, shoes, musical instruments, food, and clean bedding when it is needed most. Weiss Markets in Westminster contributed $10,000 to the Owl's Nest Food Pantry at Westminster High School. The donation will help supply food items for the pantry, which relies solely on donations. It also enables the pantry to provide families with holiday dinners. Thank you again to First Financial and Weiss for their generous donations. We very much appreciate our local businesses for all they do to support our schools. And finally, as you may know, Tawny Town Elementary School and North Carroll Middle School were damaged during the storm we experienced just prior to the winter break when the temperatures went very, very low. I'd like to thank the many employees who worked tirelessly to clean up and make the necessary repairs. Thanks to their hard work and dedication over the break, both schools were able to reopen on schedule. And then finally, I would also like to just reiterate what our other Board members have already stated, which is to thank the commissioners for the joint meeting that we had today and the productive conversation we had around Blueprint and its implementation.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have a presentation on the Formod Day. Come on down.
So we have some staff here today who are going to do a presentation on our Formod Day, which is a structure currently utilized for scheduling in our high schools. We have Mr. King, Director of High Schools. We have Mr. Vandergrift, who is our Supervisor of Health and Physical Education, and Mr. Carl Stewart, who is our Supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts. Turn things over to Mr. King.
All right, thank you guys very much. I'll try to move through this in a prompt manner, but please stop us with questions. We'll provide the overview sort of where we've been, where we've gone, and what we can do to improve our current. and what we, what we can do to improve our current model. So we want to identify the strengths and challenges. We're not going to present to you that it is the perfect model. We do believe it is the, the best option for us, but we'll go into the details on that and examine the details. And we want to not only inform the board, but our community, why this is our, our current model. And, and the main talking points will be certainly the impact on actual daily instructions, Career and Tech Center, dual enrollment, internships, the Visual and Performing Arts, and, and we're certainly, uh, physical education. And we're going to hit on a little bit of the Blueprint implications as well of the schedules and, and any schedule option. So how did we get here? An independent review of the high school program was conducted during the 2004, 2005 school year. And I won't read every, all this to you, but the Mellon Brook Report was an independent report that was examining high school schedules and high school function at, at that time in general. And they recommended the For My Day structure with A-Day, B-Day classes as part of that. So, and, and it was a pretty intense evaluation of high schools. The Carroll County, I guess, Dr. Eckler brought in. Staff and students were interviewed. You can see all the things that they did. It was pretty in-depth. New graduation requirements were being added at the time. So just to set the scene, the board was interested in adding things like financial lit, freshman seminar, which was a requirement and is now optional. Obviously, since then, we've added the second mandatory health class, et cetera. So it was a time of growth, and that was when the high school assessments also were becoming a much bigger part of our business and what we did as high school educators. So daily instruction, obviously a big part of what we do and what we try to focus on. And, and maybe the most important point of this is going to be that it gave students the opportunity to earn thirty-two credits. And you can only earn twenty-eight credits in a traditional seven mod model. And that gave students a lot of options, a lot of things that they could explore that they were not able to before that. And it certainly helped as the Career and Tech Program under, it was still Kate Ingalls' leadership at the time, before Mr. Eckles took over, were adding programs, and this gave more opportunity to students because, you know, they had more opportunities to, to take classes. So it reduced transition time in the halls. Obviously, I mean, I don't have to explain the logistics of that. It reduced class changes. It, it was more time in class for the students with the teachers. They could have a deeper exploration of curriculum, more opportunities for intervention and enrichment, which of course is a huge part of the Blueprint, which is going to be a theme of everything we do. It provided teachers more planning time, because the contract at the time, I believe there's still current language, is you get a planning mod equivalent to one of the teaching mods. And in most of the high schools, that's eighty-six to eighty-eight minutes. And so it gave the teachers more planning time, which again, is another big aspect of the Blueprint. Starting new courses with new teachers and classmates. And so it also replicated a little bit of the college model, and certainly from the socioeconomic, uh, mental health aspect, getting a fresh start second semester is a huge boost for a lot of kids and certainly a lot of teachers as well. So some of the things you can do in the semesterized For My Day, you can double up. And a lot of our advanced students will do that. It's traditional in most of the high schools that they'll, they'll double up in science and they'll take the physics, and then the chemistry as freshmen. They could take a back-to-back Spanish courses. They could really speed things up. And as you guys know, we're starting to get into the world of kids really want to explore the dual enrollment, take multiple AP courses. This can really speed things up for the advanced students. And for any student that may have a goal of going to Career and Tech so that they can get a lot of their graduation requirements taken care of quicker. And it is easier to focus on four or five courses at a time compared to seven or eight courses. And certainly having a freshman in my home, the reduction in the amount of courses they had to, to worry about was an enormous stress relief. And it helped them focus better on those four or five classes if they have an A-Day, B-Day. This also, it was an enormous part of this. Mr., I mean, Ms. Sherry Bream took a lot of us to a conference in Florida, and we focused on the Advisory Flex process, which is what we have in place. And that is not possible in the seven or eight-period day. And, and I won't go into every detail of that, but you guys know they receive advisory lessons once a week. And then they're able to be flexed for in-school academic intervention, which again, is a huge part of, of the Blueprint. And advisory also meets COMAR standards, and that was a huge part of the presentations that I think Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Bream did to the board, where there were things that we didn't have in courses that we would have had to add, and we, we, we cover those in advisory. Students, especially seniors, also who fail a class, get a second opportunity that same year. And that is a huge part of the high school world. I mean, we'd like to not have any student ever struggle and fail a class. But when you can put them right back into an English twelve, they tend to pass the second time around. And in a seven or eight-period day, you have to get incredibly creative or they're just not going to graduate. And we do have those opportunities to save, well, to help seniors save themselves. The longer mod means students spend a lot more time in class each day learning. Again, less time in the halls. Longer daily classes are absolutely conducive for science and career and tech labs, hands-on activities, physical education, and the visual and performing arts. They really get to get deeper into what they're doing that day and makes that one day's class more, more meaningful. Certainly, a science lab is very difficult to do in a shorter period. Provides teachers additional opportunities for differentiated, differentiated instruction. And again, after a period of direct instruction, they do have more time to work with kids individually, walk around the class, see if they have kids grouped who may have different struggles and need that support. And it certainly helps to support positive relationships with teachers and staff as they get to know their students better in longer class periods. And this works perfectly for the local assessments, where a student's going to miss more courses in their day to take an MCAP exam, where right now, they're going to miss most or part of two mods. So that's another advantage of the For My Day. Career and Tech is certainly something that's come up before, and we're, we're building an incredible addition and renovation as we speak. A student can, can go to Career and Tech while still taking two graduation requirements at their school and knocking those out, because then they can spend the time to take three mods of Career and Tech, which is, is a full program, three mods for two, for two semesters. A seven-mod day would require students to sacrifice more courses. And through my research on this, the reality is the school systems that do this, the traditional model, their Career and Tech Center is the home school of the students. And that's just not our model, and I, I mean, I don't think we're going backwards because we're, we're, we're invested in our current center, which would not be able to handle being a comprehensive school. And so they, they certainly, it's easy to, to get the students the seat time they need at Career and Tech in our current model. Internships also, which is another huge part of the, the Blueprint, which we want to increase, they work perfectly. And really, the senior year in general works well. That second semester, students have so many options where they can take a class. Maybe there's an AP they love. Maybe there is a graduation requirement, and then they can do dual enrollment, they can do an internship. And in a seven-period day, they'd be sacrificing two or three classes during the day in their building to leave and go to that job site, go to whatever their internship may be. And again, dual enrollment, it works so well for students to leave after second mod or even after third mod, which is either at eleven o'clock or twelve fifty-five, and be able to take classes at, at Carroll if they're able to travel there. So it just really gives that, that, you know, we talk about college and career-ready, and it gets the kids' feet on the ground in that setting, whatever it may be, an internship or dual enrollment. So the Visual and Performing Arts, again, most art courses are scheduled, Performing Arts are in an A-Day, A-Day, B-Day format. Now, that is something that we're going to acknowledge, we want to improve, and we want to do more of. And, and that could be its own presentation, and hopefully, we don't need, need to do that. But A-Day, B-Day is a marriage. That is my best analogy. So you want to have fifteen or more kids that want this class, maybe an instrumental music class, and then fifteen or more kids that can take the same class on the opposite day. So the schedulers work incredibly hard to continue to offer things in an A-Day, B-Day format. Certainly, Performing Arts and AP classes are two of the most popular. But at the smaller schools, it is a challenge. The long-term goal is for us to, especially as we get into the Blueprint, is to eliminate some of the course offerings that don't lead to anything, that aren't CCR courses, taking the kid to something that's going to benefit them in their career. Because the fewer options you have like that, the better class sizes we get to A-Day, B-Day more and more. And there's no question, we want to increase A-Day, B-Day. And I know certainly Mr. Stewart is a hundred percent on board with that and will reinforce that. But the, the benefits are the time that a chorus class has to practice songs, to practice instrumental pieces that they would be rushed to, to do in a forty-eight-minute period. The pandemic impacted obviously all the performance arts programs. We're not going to hide from that. We know that that's the truth. Folks are working incredibly hard to rebuild things like marching bands and, and any extracurricular activity where, while students sat at home, they may have lost the desire, the love, the interest. And, and people are working very hard to bring them back to all those things. And, and again, pairing the appropriate courses with the performing arts classes is incredibly important. It's a challenge. Our scheduling software has a conflict matrix, which will tell the scheduler the best mod, but it is not perfect, and it is something we're going to continue to try to work on and improve. So marching band, obviously, is an extracurricular activity. It's one that we all love and value. It certainly makes for a special environment, any event that they attend, and then certainly for those kids. They do not need to take an instrumental music course to join the marching band. It helps for recruiting, but it is not mandatory. Elementary and middle school feeder programs are vitally important, just like anything else. You, you see success in any high school activity when there's a strong feeder, whether it's a sport, et cetera, whether it's SGA, et cetera. And there are so many extracurricular activities now, more so than in certainly the history of American society for kids. And more of them are asking kids to make four-year commitments. Certainly, you can point to any sport that you'd like, dance, anything. There are drama activities in the community. So kids are making choices, and sometimes marching band isn't the choice. And certainly, we want to make it the choice as much as possible, like all of our activities. Because we know they're good for kids, and we're proud of what we do in Carroll County. So recruiting is an enormous part of the job for band directors, coaches, FFA advisors, you name it. They want to pull the kids in, and that is a part of this equation. And unfortunately, students are choosing work sometimes, certainly because of the financial impact over these activities, which is saddens our staff, but it is part of the reality of the numbers at some schools. Physical education, certainly, and Mr. Vandergrift can point out, I think those teachers absolutely love the opportunity to play the games after they've taught the skills to have the time in the gym or out on the field. They have a lot of time to change. There's time for the assessments that are obviously part of these courses that are very academic now in nature, along with the activities. They can warm up. I mean, I don't have to explain that, the, the importance of that to everyone. Warm up, cool down, and they're getting more money. They're bank for their buck. They get to do more in a day, whatever the unit is in PE. Again, the challenge is choosing the other course to A-Day, B-Day. I think we do a better job with it with PE because PE is a graduation requirement, and after their initial course, the, the Performing Arts are not. But that's something we're always looking at to do the best that we possibly can with the pairings. So again, I told you there are challenges. We're, we're not pretending it's the perfect model. And, you know, the gap is something we've spoken, we've talked about. That's come up at several meetings over the years, even before I was a director. And with AP, we can certainly fill that in with more AP review sessions, which is paid for by my office. Most of the AP teachers are enthusiastically participate, but they are competing for the time of the kids, as Emily probably knows, because they're very busy. But we do offer those AP review sessions. And of course, the, which has been brought up in this meeting as well, the days of instruction, second semester. Usually, the first semester kids, they get, you know, full, they get a lot of instruction, and then they just have to fill in the gaps so they don't forget things. The second semester is, is a little bit of a rush. And again, I feel like we can fill that in with more AP review sessions and/or, I know some of the schools will do AP, they'll have their own Trump Day for Flex, so that, that teacher will flex only their AP students, because of course, they're teaching other courses. But those, there are ways we can fill in those gaps for students. And obviously, we have some incredible teachers that teach AP. So other implications, I mean, the Blueprint is, is something we've been talking about in great detail. They're going to mandate that we have courses for students that are not college and career-ready. Mr. Wernick and the supervisors are working incredibly hard to create these classes, but we're going to need the time in the kid's four-year schedule, their ECP or four-year plan, so to speak, to take this course that the Blueprint is mandating. So we don't want to go backwards and have fewer opportunities to take that class. And because we still want those students to go to Career and Tech, et cetera. A transition to a seven-mod structure would require additional staff because of the planning time requirements in the Blueprint and would have a significant fiscal impact. In a four-mod day, high school teachers can teach six courses a year, and a seven-mod day, high school teachers can only teach five. So again, the, the manpower aspect would be a challenge. So that was a lot of information, but...
This is the beginning.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Yes.
I actually just wanted to kind of go back to that very...
Sure.
Sorry. I just wanted to go back to that last comment about the transition to a seven-mod day.
Yes.
Require additional staff. I, I want to understand that better, because I feel like it would be the opposite. Right now, we have, teachers are teaching three out of four mods, right? So that would be twenty-five percent planning time, whereas the Blueprint would require closer to a sixty, forty mix.
Right.
It seems like that would be a whole lot easier to achieve if you had seven mods and you could do four out of seven, you know, have, have planning time for three than to do two and two. Like, that, that's obviously, we're not going to have teachers in front of the kids enough if it's two and two.
Right.
So how do you, how do you reconcile that?
Go ahead. I think... And even in our current, and, and even aside from Blueprint, our meeting, our current contractual number of minutes of planning for, for week, per week would be a challenge. We wouldn't be able to offer the, the same number of courses that we currently do if we had our current staff in transition to that, just because of the, of the... And, and this is kind of even before that sixty, forty split that I know we're even working toward. But, but even now, to be able to provide the contractual number of minutes of planning time for, for teachers, it would prob, it would require more staff if, if we were to make that transition to the seven-mod day. Because I, if my memory is correct, too, when we made this transition way back in, I think it was even pre-2004, there was some, you know, that was also at the time where we were, you know, starting to, to trim back a staff as well. So that's even, even aside from the Blueprint piece, that current number of minutes in the contract would be, you know, we would, would, would require us to have more staff to teach the same number of courses that we're providing now.
Okay. Because I guess it, it seems like it would be easier to meet that with having seven mods, seven periods to work with rather than four mods, like in order to get closer to those planning time requirements. But I guess maybe, are there other ways that you can do it? Like with the A-Day, B-Day splits and things like that? Like have maybe just a B-Day?
It could be. It could be. Those are all kind of very unique options that we'll have to start to unpack in time to see what that's, what that's going to look like. It's hard to say exactly now how we would meet that sixty, forty, because I think there's still a lot of information about, you know, what, what does that forty look like? And, and what does it include? What does it not include? And those are still unknowns currently, you know, with our, with our guidance. I imagine in time, we're going to get clearer guidance, but that's one of those things early on. Right now, we don't have a lot of guidance about what that structure of that forty needs to look like. So hard to say right now, but I understand exactly what you're saying.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to, you know, make all the numbers work in my head, trying to make sure I understood it properly. Because I know when we did this transition, it was something that Steve Guthrie talked about, that I guess there were, that we were expecting to save some funds by moving to the For My Day back at, at that time. But I don't think it ever, his, his, his statements were that it never really materialized. So I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe that was just a...
It's hard to quantify.
Hard to quantify. Okay. So it wouldn't necessarily make it easier under the Blueprint to have a seven-mod day.
No. I, I think no matter what, where our structure is going to look different, to what degree that, that difference is going to be is dependent upon what that, that structure of that forty percent time needs to, needs to be. And, and that's going to be different across the board. Even, you know, you think of our current structure in our middle schools and our elementary schools, it's going to look a little, it's going to look a lot different when we get to that point.
I have a lot of questions, but I'll, I'll like go in turn.
Emily? With the six-mod-a-day schedule, would A-Day, B-Days be completely eliminated? Or is it just fewer courses are A-Day, B-Day then?
No, if, if, if the models I looked at for a six or seven-period day, there is no A-Day.
No A-Day.
It's eliminated.
And then I know on the, on slide eleven, it says fewer courses are all year. How many courses do we lose by having a four-mod-a-day schedule?
Lose by...
Lose like...
So we would lose if we, so if we went to a seven-period day, that would, I mean, it's seven periods for the entire year, so a student could earn, could take seven classes.
Okay, so this is in relation to credits?
Eight. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Yep.
I just thought it meant like courses available, like health can only be offered all year. Thank you.
Yeah. I think we would lose courses available, because the master schedule would by, have to shrink.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I don't want to get rid of the For My Day, but it needs to be tweaked. You know, I was at North Carroll High School where Dr. Eckles, we were, we were the high school that implemented it. And as I've said before, it really hurt band, chorus, music, the arts. It phys ed in some ways, because they needed to take, they wanted to take their AP classes and continue on. on and dual enrollment, and they just didn't have time to. We, you know, we lost several teachers because of that, just at North Carroll High School for elective. But I really think it needs to be a hybrid of some sort and continue with that A-B. But I don't think, that time schedule works great. And I do know that that time schedule works great with career and tech, which is also a, one of our obvious things that we have to work with. So, I think we need to stick with that timeframe, but I really feel that we can do some hybrid, you know, some 40, you know, 45-minute or whatever classes, because I taught at 47 minutes. They go in, they change, they do five exercises. We're supposed to teach them a skill and play a game, and then by that time, it was over. I mean, they were running back out. So, it really was great for science. And also, believe it or not, like, home and, a fax or home economics, whatever it used to be called in the dark days. But it really helped out in that you could actually get dressed, do exercises, do some running, do a skill set, and then actually play the game. And then you could go back and shower if you wanted to and change and go ready. But I just think now, what we hear, I think we need to tweak that a little bit and gives, we might need to have some classes that are only 47 minutes and make a great hybrid of it and do better. I really think so. And, but the times, the times work really well with career and tech, and I know that's one of the driving forces, and I understand that. We have to take care of that gem over there. But in the other things, we need to make sure that the kids get dance, they get their, they can sing, and they can play their musical instruments. Because, let me tell you, by the time the band would get out on the, on the football field, excuse me, or the main field, whatever it was, the practice, it was time to bring that tuba back in and put it away, and they blew three notes. So, and I know that for a fact, you know? So, we just need to make some adaptations to that and tweak it. And I think it would be then an excellent...
Yep.
...model then.
Yeah, the overall structure, we hear you loud and clear, that A-B piece, we're going to continue to offer courses that way. We'll continue to look, define ways to do that, you know, as, you know, as student-centered in a way as we can, with giving lots of option and choice for our students. And that's always been something that's been very important to our students and a great thing that we've always been able to provide. Obviously, we provide great core instruction, but all of those electives, and especially now with that college and career readiness piece, being able to offer the flex, having the flexibility to offer those very student-specific courses. Again, that's blueprint. We know that we'll be expanding that. This will give us that opportunity to...
But I don't want to rock the boat right now, because these people are trying to swim upstream with this blueprint, and they are drowning right now. And we don't need to put another thing on their plate right now, but I think eventually we can, we can tweak this and fix this. But I know we are so heavily involved in blueprint. But I'm so glad you gave the presentation, and I know Mr. Savigny has more questions, but we, people need to know this. Go ahead, Mr. Savigny.
I actually think Mr. Whistler.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Whistler.
Yeah, I really appreciate the presentation. As a former teacher, I can tell you that I'm really concerned about moving to a seven-mod day would significantly impact our teachers' ability to dig into rigor. And I'm very concerned about the impact on academic achievement if we go to a seven-day mod. Again, as a former teacher, I needed the time to differentiate my instruction, especially at the elementary level, small group settings, and we need to explore academic rigor. So, a four-mod day really gives us that opportunity. And then in a second issue, I am very concerned about the elimination of credits. Again, I'm really big on FFA. We need more FFA classes, opportunities in our schools, and I would really hate to see us squeeze out even more opportunities for our students that want to explore those options. So, I would really encourage my colleagues to really consider the impact on academic achievement if we go to a seven-day period.
Mr. Savigny?
Okay, thanks.
You're on.
Yeah, and I completely agree with, you were making some comments about hybrid, sort of a hybrid version. I understand there are definitely benefits to the four-mod day, and I think overall, the benefits are much more than the challenges. But if there are ways to tweak it a little bit, to get those extra pieces, right? Like, we know that it's good for career and tech. We know that it's good for science and labs and things like that. We know that it's good for PE. But the places where it's not quite as good are, you know, math, where it's, you know, it's much more difficult to squeeze. Can you really do two lessons in one day in that extended mod and not have time to go home and do homework on that? And it's just the attention span that the kids might have for, you know, 90 minutes or 80 minutes of a double math lesson, and then not having math, only having math half the year and not having it the rest of the year, and then kind of rolling into it the following year. Same thing with languages, right? Like, most kids are just going to take one language class for the year, and it's going to be half the year, and then they end up having six, seven, eight months off until they receive language instruction again. By that time, you've already, like, backpedaled so far in your retention. So, it's like, if you could just make, if we could think about potentially making tweaks in concert with, with all the blueprint changes that we're making, you know, like, math and languages might be a place to see if we could focus on it. Because, as I said, I think, I think the benefits outweigh the cons, right? But, but there are ways to potentially...
Sure.
...to tweak it. So, but to your point, Mrs. Herbert, about like, it's a pile-on right now, right? With everything going on with the blueprint. But I think what, maybe the message that we would try to be getting across as a board is we're open to creativity and flexibility to try to see, like, at this time that we're making massive changes, if there's a way that you could maybe do, if hybrid helps in some way, or if, you know, we're open to hearing those suggestions.
Sure. Great. Yeah, absolutely.
And I think we'd like to see, I think it'd be helpful, do we know, did academic achievement, we've got a lot of comments that said, you know, we think that academic achievement is better under a four-mod day. Is that anecdotal, or like, we feel that that should be the case? Or do we actually have, you know, data from the past that shows that?
It's difficult to, to use quantitative data to show that, only because there were so many other changes over the years at the same time, that it's hard to pinpoint, was it the four-mod day? Was it a change in the curriculum? Was it a change in our instructional practice? Because we didn't keep everything else the same...
Right.
...for long enough to determine whether it was the four-mod day that helped.
And I think the transition from high school assessments to MCAP, the tests changed a lot over the years as well. So, the target kept moving in a lot of ways.
Right. Okay. Yeah, and I think maybe, maybe as part of blueprint, we get back to basics a little bit as well. Like, I think in theory, the four-mod day and the 80-minute period should work better, but maybe in practice, we've kind of lost some of those capabilities of, you know, how do we keep kids interested? How do we, how do we enforce those concepts with the acceleration of the material, right? Are we really getting through the material in the, with the rigor that we need to? So, just some thoughts. Do we know how many other school systems across Maryland use a four-mod day versus a different approach?
It's a bit of a mix, to be honest with you. We did our best to pull as many systems as we could. I think you'll find in some of the, the much larger school systems use a seven-mod day, and then your medium and smaller-sized systems use a four-mod day. And again, I think that speaks to some of the resources of the very large school system in being able to do that. But that's, that's, again, not reporting on all 24 LEAs, but the, from the majority that we heard from, that's how I would, I would, you know, would describe that. Again, with some exceptions, and I think almost every system utilizes some sort of variation to adapt and meet student needs, like a, you know, like an A-B day, like incorporating some hybrid structures in the schedules. It's, you know, very different and always evolving. And I think that's, as our walk away, what we're hearing is, obviously, the structure is good, but continue to seek opportunities to evolve, improve, and get creative to maximize opportunities for kids. And that's, that's what we will, we will continue to do.
Ms. Pataglia?
I want to thank you guys a lot for this, because when I look back 30 years ago, I didn't have four-mod day as a freshman at the time at Westminster High. And when you're at E-Wing doing chorus and you got a book at five minutes all the way to the very corner third-floor science room, with a bookbag full of books, by the way, it, yeah, it was a little uncomfortable. So, you know, I was very jealous of my sister when she had four-mod day. Lucky! And I think, you know, it has extreme benefits, you know? Class material, she's not carrying around all day long. Homework, I mean, I think that was one of the, if I remember correctly, that was one of the ideas behind it, is the kids wouldn't have as much homework, so they could do more extracurriculars after school hours. Because, yeah, think about it, I mean, if you got math and your science and your social studies and your English homework on top of any other class, and you got football practice, you know, it does add up. And, you know, kids were losing sleep. So, that's another thing we hear about is, you know, later times, but I'm not getting into that. To Mr. Whistler's point, I mean, we do still have some, and it's not a lot, it's hit or miss, where some classes can't be offered because not enough students have signed up for them. And I know that's something we struggle with in various schools. You know, I mean, you have the interest by, you know, like, maybe a handful of kids, but unfortunately, there's just not enough interest in that class all the time to make sure the students are offered it. And I think that might be something somehow to work out, you know, with looking into this a little bit deeper. But I, you know, I'm a huge fan of the four-mod day, and I wish I would have had it. You know, like with gym, blow up the balls, blow down the balls. Yep, yep.
And I think that's why I said, as we work through the blueprint, we want to take a close look at our program of studies, because if there's seven things to pick from, you get six and four and eight, and if there are four things to pick from maybe, and they all lead to being CCR especially, like, an ag completer is really good for a kid. Singleton classes sometimes, not that there's something wrong with doing something for interest, but they lead to something. And I know that's, you know, working with Ms. McCoslin, we want completer programs. So, that is something we know we want to get into, but as you guys have been talking about, we're still working through this, you know, the blueprint. But we know that needs to be part of a longer-term solution to build stronger schedules, especially at a smaller school like Francis Scott Key, where the puzzle pieces are harder to put together than they are at Westminster. That's just the reality of the size.
Ms. Emily?
I would just like to really quickly iterate student opinion, so we can kind of gauge that. I conducted a poll, and 88% of our current student body preferred the four mods, and 92.6% of both students who are currently in our school system and are graduates prefer the four mods. So, I just wanted to throw this number out there. And the most consistently reiterated points are the focus that it allows for students between class time, the ability to do a lab, take the time to really understand why you're doing the lab, then conduct the lab, and then conclude it, and then also the ability to focus on those four or five classes. Students really do prefer that. The only con that I do consistently appear is that AP, the point of taking the extra time after school to, which I do really appreciate, and I know a lot of students started to get really interested in those AP nights, but still, that, trying to find the time to study for those different tests, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Savigny?
I just want to, I just want to reiterate the AP comment. I know that, you know, in the last several years, that is one of the, like, AP scores and pass rates have seemed to come down pretty dramatically. And I think that the four-mod day might have something to do with that. But if, if we can talk about potential solutions, like, in terms of the tweaks to help out with that, I think it would be a great discussion to have.
And Ms. Lilly, I know, does, does updates with you guys on occasion, but she has gotten the AP committee back together, which is the AP teachers across the county, which I know they're speaking about these exact same challenges. So, I think, you know, I'll be consulting with her and Mr. Shokni to try to put some things in place, because obviously, you know, we value the AP program and want the kids to have the absolute best opportunity to do well, so.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next, we will move on to reports, and our first one for the night is school construction report.
So, this is the monthly school construction report. Mr. Marx is here, if you have any questions.
For the second month in a row, I don't have any questions on...
All right. Okay. Nothing else? Thank you, Mr. Marx. We will move on. And now, we will have a report on the blueprint implementation.
As we shared in December, we will continue to provide updates as the system prepares our required local blueprint implementation plan. Mr. O'Neill is here to provide an overview as to where we are in the process and our next steps.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm not going to present this. It's, it's not really, the devil is in the detail of the plan document itself. We'll kind of go back over the timelines and what's sort of the next steps, but I'm not going to go through these slides, what we've done for the sake of the presentation. And for anyone who would want to see it or look at this, the presentation document is, we simply took the, the items from the state template that we have to complete, to complete the plan that are, that are defined as objectives or focus areas under those objectives for each of the five pillar policy areas. But, but the real essence of the plan is the level below that. It's all of the prompts that are required by, by the state for us to complete for each of these focus areas, and the data sets that have to be completed, and the linked artifacts that have to be supplied. So, I think folks are going to have to see the plan document in order to truly understand sort of the breadth and scope of all of this. We're, we're at a point where I believe we're probably a week or two away from being a little more comfortable about making that plan publicly available when we reach that point. And it's just a matter of finding the time and the collective, the collective time and energy to get all of the right folks back together to say, okay, this is, this is a good enough starting point to put this out for feedback. I think we could probably have it on our website in a couple of weeks. We will begin to reach out to stakeholder groups at the same time to share the plan and to give them an opportunity to offer some feedback. You have had a chance to see a little bit of a rougher draft in the works. I guess I would say that, whatever time we make it public, everyone will need to understand that until we submit this plan as required under the law by March 15 to the Accountability and Implementation Board, it is always a work in progress. So, even as it sits as a snapshot in time on our webpage for people to view, somebody in this room or not in this room is changing it and modifying it and updating. So, that's going to have to be generally understood. So, I'm going to skip the slides about the pillars, because I'm not sure what value there is in having too much discussion there. We've talked about this last month, and we'll, you know, we'll cover it one more time, not literally bullet by bullet. There are some challenges here, and I want to bring this back up to say, I think this gets better with time. So, the blueprint's a 10-year window. We have a local implementation plan that's due for the first time this March, but it's going to have to be redone year after year, every year of the blueprint. And I just, and we'll figure out a way to share this as we, as we reach out to stakeholder groups. But in this first pass, given the constraints of time and the amount of, the volume involved here in pulling this together, it's not going to be a scenario, unfortunately, in this first year, where a stakeholder group could send a lot of feedback and us have time to reflect on that, synthesize it, and make significant structural changes to the document. It doesn't mean that the feedback won't be valuable, and it doesn't mean that over an annual revision over 10 years, that that feedback can't be incorporated if the superintendent and the board feel that way. But in this first year, it's, it's, there might be some hurt feelings, like, we offered you feedback and we don't see that feedback making its way into the document. I just want to sort of pre-apologize that I don't, I don't see a way to really, to have that opportunity in this, in this first, first pass. In terms of the process here, we talked last, last month that, you know, technically, legally, you, the board, don't have to approve this plan, but Mrs. McCabe still has to turn it in, but she's fully committed to having as much opportunity for involvement and dialogue and discussion as we possibly can. So, you've seen a rougher draft. We'll make it public in a bit. We'll be back in February with something much closer to, you know, to a final draft. And then, there might be even a sliver of time between your March meeting and when it's absolutely due to the state where, where we could put a, you know, an even more polished version in front of you. And I guess the only other thing I'll say before questions, I hope I said this last month as well, a lot of people in this organization are investing a lot of time and intellect and expertise and energy into constructing this, and they don't get to stand here and say anything, but I just want to thank them, because I understand that a lot of folks have two jobs right now, and I probably don't thank them enough, but I should, and I'm aware of that, and we do appreciate the lift that's involved here.
And I will jump on that, too, because, believe it or not, the schools are running, the principals are trying to do what they are doing, teachers are trying to teach, but in the meantime, you all are trying to do two jobs. You're teaching and doing your academic achievement, and then you're doing blueprint, and I actually emailed that young man in the back one night, he was still here at eight o'clock at night with his lights on in his office, and I said, what, and I emailed him, and I said, what are you still doing here? He says, I have to get things done. So I want to tell everybody, you know, we appreciate, as a Board of Education, how much time this has been in your lives, and it's actually like you do have two jobs, and we really do appreciate that. And we weren't a part of the mandate, we've just been given the mandate, so, without a whole lot of money, so I want to thank you all, and I do understand this, and we do have, the nice thing is, we have the next step. So this is a living document, and it's going to be that way for ten years, so it will change all the time. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say? All right, we will move on. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Now we will have the Maryland School Survey results.
So incrementally, I'm sorry. Incrementally, we're beginning to receive student data associated with the MCAP from MSDE, and one of the areas that we've received all of our information for is the school survey results that, and the school survey is a survey that all students take in association with the MCAP. Dr. Hart and Ms. Wilder Schaefer will cover the highlights and answer any board questions.
All right, good evening. Well, the good news is, if we're here, we have some data to present. So, that's good news. And as Ms. McCabe said, we're slowly getting things in and trying to do the best that we can with what we have at this time, keeping in mind, of course, we can't do certain things until the State Board releases information, so we're doing our best to get that to you as soon as we can. Okay? All right.
We have a clicker there that will be.
Oh, yes, that's right, thank you. Okay, so our goal today is we're going to review various components of the Maryland School Survey. We're going to analyze the results within the four domains of safety, community, environment, and relationships, and why, to support a positive learning and working environment that promotes the success for all students. And we just wanted to give a quick overview, since we haven't administered the survey since really the eighteen, nineteen school year, we haven't had data since, I think it was presented in January 2020 for the school survey, so we just wanted to review just some of the basic components, and then we can kind of get into the great details of it. So we did administer the school survey between February and April of 2022. For our students, it was for, in grades five through eleven. And then for staff, the MSD actually identifies staff as of, I think it was October 2021, to participate in the survey. It typically is just any educator that they identify, and they send a file to us who is going to take the survey. They just have to have a cutoff date so we can actually get them into the system to be a part of it. So some staff, we had staff leave in between that time, so some of, they obviously didn't participate in the survey, but unfortunately, in that time, if we had new staff come on, if it was after that cutoff date, they weren't given the opportunity to participate. But all of our staff who were here as of then were given the opportunity. Each participant must answer fifty percent or more of the items within a topic in order for it to be scored and calculated for a school survey result, and then the survey results are, of course, applied to the school in which they participated in the survey. So even students who transfer in and out of our local school systems, they'll still have the opportunity to take the survey wherever they happen to transfer to. And then just for review, elementary and middle school students typically have fifty-three questions on their survey, and high school have fifty-four questions, and then the staff have seventy-two. And then I just wanted to put the, how it appears on the survey, that when students and staff, although one of the domains is a little different, but most of them are strongly agree, agree, disagree, and strongly disagree. Again, just a review of the main domains within the survey, the safety, environment, community, and then relationships. There's also a fifth domain, which is instructional feedback for educators only on their survey, but also for the student educators, within each domain are several topics that you'll see we have data for, and then a brief description of what it may have looked like on the survey as well. This is a little bit of the confusing part. So even though they have strongly agree, agree, disagree, and strongly disagree, MSD then takes those results, converts them into scores, and then applies them in different ways to our star ratings, so it's just a big combination, and each score has a certain percentage overall, and so it's just a big, you know, they combine it all, and then we get this wonderful average in each domain and topic over the whole thing, so.
Ms. Savigny?
Yes. I definitely had some questions about that. As I read through this, I'm like, okay, how do you take a four-point scale and turn it into, you know, a one to ten average? And then how can you have averages that are lower than one and averages greater than ten if you're turning it into a ten-point scale? And it said on this other page that you have to answer fifty percent or more of the items in a topic, so does that mean if they left some sections of a topic blank, does that lower your score, or?
They just wouldn't be counted for that topic.
They just would, okay.
Yeah.
It feels like alphabet soup that isn't necessarily, like, how do we turn this into actionable information? Like, we don't really know what the questions were, and we can't really, and it's kind of, kind of an odd way to put the numbers together to try to determine what is it really telling us.
Yeah, and not only that, but then once they take it from the four scale, basically, the four top, the strongly agree and everything else, and they convert it into these, then when we speak about it, they want us to talk about it as something that's highly favorable or less favorable, and not necessarily the overall average score. So it's very tricky in trying to think about how they're even taking this, and I think with the combination, and you can, both of you can correct me, too, of how it's not just this portion that's going into our star rating, this is a small portion of what goes into that, it's the survey, you know, our absentee information, well-rounded access, and of course, our MCAP data. So it, even that, when you think about what you're saying, and then now we're going to combine it with all of these other components, it gets even more, like you said, like alphabet soup.
Right.
And it's always good to keep in mind, this is a data point, not the data point, when it comes to measuring these key areas. So obviously, we have systemic data, I don't want to steal their thunder, but we also have school, we don't have school-specific data broken down this way, but the schools will get their data as well, too. So it'll be a data point for them to be able to break down, in addition to all those other things that schools naturally do to measure the progress towards their culture and school improvement goals that they have. So again, a data point, but not the data point, so I think it's always something to keep in mind, but it is, it is some data that we, as a system, you know, can use, and definitely schools can use as we move forward.
But when I jump all the way to the back, I know I'm jumping ahead, and it has the comparison, and for the public, seven point four six two nine one seven two nine three.
Yeah.
Now, really?
Yeah.
I mean, it makes no sense.
It just, it's a false sense of accuracy when you take it out to, that's what places like.
We don't disagree.
Thank you. I was, I just saw that, and I thought, who in their right mind would waste time to go all that, all that way out? When seven point four would have been fine.
Yeah. We agree.
Okay. I just thought some, some things that really stuck out to me on this survey that's just off the charts.
Yes, it seems like you can get some directional information off of this, right? Like, and not necessarily even the first year. The first year, it's like, okay, this is our baseline. It doesn't really tell us a whole lot, but we can maybe see some things as trends in future years, right? Like, okay, are we trending up in safety? Are we trending up in, you know, some of these other topics, right? Like, but this year, I'm not sure how much it really tells us.
And I agree, and I think it's safe to say that very much where I think we, where we didn't do as well as maybe we thought or had hoped, you could, you could easily say that that was pandemic-impacted, and that's another factor in this as well. And again, we don't have, you know, the last data was from the eighteen, nineteen school year, so we had, you know, some really significant things happen over the last couple of years. So, so again, yeah, I think it is, there's some directional or some information we can get from this, but again, I think it's a tool, not a tool, as we, as we move forward.
I agree.
Is there anything specifically actionable that you think you can take out of this information? I mean, we don't know what the questions were, right?
We, so there is an available bank of questions, we just don't know specifically what questions were on for our students to answer.
Okay.
And we do have, I mean, the state releases the questions, and we can certainly provide that to Ms. McCabe, so you could have examples of what is asked, and I think it's actually really important to look at those over time, because when we get into what the actual topics are and how they're described, knowing what question went along with that is really important in order for us to create action steps moving forward.
I agree with that, because you look at some of the, one of the things that surprised me on here was the, the safety scores, and like, I think that we should be, you know, at the top of the state, I think, from that perspective, and trying to understand why we weren't, but if we don't even know what the questions were that were being asked, how do we gauge what action plans we put together?
And we had that same issue the last time our students took it. There were, there were, especially in the safety area, we didn't quite understand why students at certain schools felt more unsafe than we would have thought they would have felt. But at that time, they weren't even releasing any of the questions, so I'm glad to hear that they're at least now releasing questions in a bank, so even though we may not know the exact question our students took, we can see how the questions are worded in general.
There's also some questions and concerns that we had based on the grade level of the students, and the questions that we have as examples, what are students' interpretations of those questions? And so that could have an impact on the actual responses. Mr. Whistler?
Thank you so much for presenting the data, I really appreciate it. I'm just curious if you have any insight. Again, this seems like a Maryland State Department of Education mandated issue. The data, is it, where's the data sent? Is it like Power School? Is it, what, what's done with the data? Are parents notified? Can they opt out of taking the survey? And what kind of, what kind of process do we do here at Carroll County to let folks know that they can opt out? I'm just curious if you could give me some insight into that.
The survey, and you all, you can answer that question, because you're the local accountability coordinator, you can answer way better than I can.
We typically provide the direction of, you know, we let parents know we're giving the school survey, because it is something we do countywide for students, again, five through eleven. So they're aware that we're giving it, and the dates typically that we're giving them, and we typically say, if they're in school, they're most likely going to be participating in the survey.
Are the parents given any kind of insight into the questions, or?
They, so once we send out the information, there is a link that they can go to in order, and this kind, our bank of questions are on there, that they could possibly look at the bank that's on there, and what the domains are that they're surveyed on.
Okay.
And we do have some parents that express concern about, you know, what they, that they don't want their child to take in and things like that, so.
This is, this parallels with our state testing, so, you know, obviously, we want our students to be able to participate in our state assessments, because again, that gives us, you know, clear data as to students and progress, and how we are doing, you know, overall, and making our progress. But coming back to, but this survey will come back as, when we get those star ratings for our schools, this survey is a factor in that. So, you know, that will be, you know, and that, and that, we won't get that until probably late into the spring, if not, if not later, until we have the MCAP data, because that's a big part of our overall school ratings. And then we will make sure that we clearly communicate with families, because it's been some time, you know, eighteen, nineteen was the last time we had the star rating for schools, so we'll need to do a campaign around that again, and making sure that we're communicating with families so they understand what that means as we're, you know, as we get that data and as the state, as the state releases.
Right, but just for me, I'm very concerned with the questions that we present to our children. I'm very concerned about we having due diligence notifying parents that they have the opportunity to opt out, and I'm very, very concerned about where that data goes, who uses it, outside the county, outside the state. Again, I just want to make sure that we protect, you know, the rights of our parents and the responses of our children, and I don't want us to do anything actionable based on questions that may be just completely outrageous, in my opinion. But I really appreciate your presentation.
Dr. Dorsey?
This is done online, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. And as you're saying, it's just a component, it's just one of the pieces that's going to be used as a part of the star ratings. So what the schools actually get would be what you've presented for us here, broken down?
Correct. The schools will get each individual topic and how their individual school performed.
So at this point, all we can see is the student score versus the statewide scores, right?
As of right now.
Okay.
So does it, does it get all the way down to the student level, or is school level is the most that the schools would see? They wouldn't see individual?
No, they'll only see like the overall, the overall average in a certain topic on the survey. Just, they'll have all the same information just based off of their individual school that, for the staff and administrators.
Okay.
Dr. Dorsey?
Again, just thinking back again to how it's just one part of the actual star rating, do we know how much of the star rating it is, or?
I am, I am not the expert in that portion of it. Now, when we, we are getting information on our star rating next month from the board, from the State Board, so hopefully, when I give that information, we can have some specifics.
I'm a little rusty myself, Dr. Dorsey, so I'll find out knowledge of a percentage. It factors in.
I just know that they are, like, the accountability system is a total of a hundred points, and each of those domains that we said, between MCAP, well-rounded absenteeism, and then the school survey data, they all have a certain percentage or portion of those points.
I'm just, I'm just trying to connect all the dots. So, so this all goes into the star rating for the schools, and then how is that star rating utilized? Like, is that going to be part of an accountability component with blueprint? Is it, you know, any funding or anything else? Is anything, what does it, what does it then impact?
Right.
The, 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 there will be, that is how the low-performing schools are identified, and historically, we have not had anyone within that, within that category.
Okay, okay, so it's just to determine the low-performing schools?
Correct, and I think it's also is to serve as a, as a, you know, a communication tool for families on how successful, you know, the school is being.
Ms. Pataglia?
I was gonna, I was just thinking the same thing, like, how can they potentially use this as a way regarding funding for blueprint, or the accountability measures, or, you know, anything, I mean, let's face it, the state has been make, to me, making things up as they go, you know, funding-wise, so, you know, they could add this piece to it. I worry about the star ratings, though, because, again, we don't know what the questions have been. Is the students really answering, or are they just like, just get it done, over with? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, like, really liking this. Like, it just seems to...
And this is one part of the overall star rating. Attendance is a part of it, access to a well-rounded curriculum, and our student achievement is a, is a factor in that, in addition to the survey as well, too. So I can get you that breakdown as to how all that flows, but again, not, this is not the sole determining factor on determining the success of our, of our schools is a factor.
I just, I would just wish there was a way that the community could see the actual questions before our students see them. I mean, I know you're saying there's a bank of them, and this is an example, but, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I know as a parent, I don't like my kids answering questionnaires until I read them first. That's just me. But I think a lot of parents are that same way, too.
Any other comments? We need to move on.
I don't know how in-depth you want me to go into each of these, I know everybody has the information, so if you have any other questions at this time on the data, I don't think there's anything else at the end. I know you guys saw the overall data as well, so.
Yeah, I like that, where you showed everybody those big numbers.
Yeah.
All, all going on.
Twelve of them on each slide.
Well, thank you all very much for your presentation, and I'm sorry we had so many que, no.
Oh, you're fine.
We need that. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now we're going to move on to action items, and the very first one, I need a motion for the approval of Family Life Advisory Committee opt-out recommendations for grades pre-K through five family life units.
Same move.
And I need a second?
Second.
By Mr. Whistler.
Okay, so last month, we discussed the family life opt-out recommendations, and they return this month for board action. Mr. Wernick is back to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So I'm happy to share with you the work that the Family Life Committee, you know, conducted in November, especially looking at the elementary framework, state framework, and creating a Carroll County Public Schools and creating a Carroll County Public Schools Framework. We, again, took a similar approach with elementary as we did with middle and high school, looking at certain topics, crossing out some topics, and some, moving some of the indicators to, to a couple of different grade levels because we thought that they just weren't age appropriate. But I have to say that this was looking at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. There weren't as many changes at the elementary level as there were in, in middle and high school. And then one other caveat, remember that these will not go into effect until the school year 24, 25. So not next year, but the following school year when we will allow for either students to receive the state version, the Carroll County Public Schools Framework, or an opt-out completely of just the Family Life portion.
Thank you. Do you have any comments or questions since we reviewed this last month?
Ms. Sevigny? I do just have a couple of quick comments. And I, Mr. Wernick, I appreciate your reiterating that this won't go into effect until 2024 because I think that's really important to the community to understand that of when, for, for elementary level, when will they need to look at these, the differences in, in frameworks between the state and the, the Carroll County version and when they need to opt in and opt out. So just reiterating the 2024. I did want to make one comment on, on the, the cover page on Items 1 and 3. It says, including both the state framework and the standards proposed by the Family Life Advisory Committee. I just want to make a correction. We, we didn't, the Family Life Committee didn't work on the standards. The, the standards are the standards, right? I mean, there are the eight standards that are in COMAR. What we looked at were the indicators in the framework, right?
Correct.
So I, I think if we could just make those changes, those two words under 1 and 3, change the word standards to indicators, just so there's no confusion. The standards are the standards and they have to be applied.
Absolutely. We could change it as well as the topics because it was the topics and the indicators that we actually.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, the topics and indicators would be great. Okay.
Are there any other comments, questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. I need a motion for the approval of Award of Bids.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by, by Dr. Dorsey.
There are only two items on the Award of Bids. The award for the Spring Garden HVAC project, which received state funding to finalize the county's prior funding, and the annual bid list for musical instruments for schools to purchase as needs require.
No comments? I call, oh, I should have done, I didn't think she was picking it up. Go ahead.
Sorry. No, I just wanted to make a comment about the, the Spring Garden HVAC. So I think this is good news. That this bid came in below what we had budgeted for, right? So it's good news in the current inflationary environment.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
So happy to see that. So just, just a little bit of commentary there. Thank you.
All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Action Items.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia.
For the monthly, for the monthly Personnel Action Items, there are four new hires, one broken contract, one promotion, and two leaves of, leaves of absence.
Comments? Questions? All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Appointments.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
By Ms. Pataglia.
I have two recommendations for your approval this evening. The first is Mr. James Lawson from 12 Month School Psychologist to Supervisor of Student Services, Behavioral and Mental Health. And the second, Michael Yant from School Counselor to Acting Assistant Principal at Sandy Mount Elementary.
I see no questions or comments. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of Substitute Pay Increases.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Sevigny, thank you.
At the boardwork session last month, I signaled that I was constructing my FY24 budget to include significant permanent increases to substitute rates. The need for substitutes and classroom coverage in our schools continues to be a pressing need. Therefore, in anticipation of the FY24 budget and to assist schools for the remainder of this year, I am requesting you to approve the increased rates effective at the next pay period following this meeting. We anticipate the costs for the remainder of FY23 to be approximately $700,000. We believe we would realize sufficient savings in our major budget categories to cover these costs at the year end.
Ms. Sevigny?
I just wanted to make some comments about how normally this isn't something that, that we'd want to change kind of mid-year, right? Like after we have all the budget situation. But I think that this is a significant issue that we've been experiencing across the system. I've heard it from many, many directions, many, many educators out there. If you ask them, you know, what's the, the biggest challenge that they have at the moment, they're like, we just don't have enough subs. We don't have good coverage. And our principals, we're hearing that, you know, they spend significant parts of their day just trying to figure out how to get coverage rather than actually addressing like academic achievement issues and how to catch our kids back up after, you know, recovery learning and, and things like that. So I'm, I'm, I am very much in support of this because I think it will allow us to start getting ahead of it again so that we can get our focus back on the real problems that we have to, to solve, to support our students.
Thank you. I know our principals and teachers and assistants would agree.
All right. Seeing no other cards, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of MOA between Local Educational Agency and Juvenile Services Education Program.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Dr. Dorsey.
I recommend the approval of the Memorandum of Agreement between CCPS and JSCP. The MOA helps to ensure coordination between our agencies when students are placed in CCPS.
Ms. Sevigny?
And I know the answer to this question, but I'm just going to ask it out loud so that the, the community can hear it. But how many students does this, does this typically impact in CCPS?
A very, very small number of students.
A number that I can't tell you.
That wouldn't be, yes. But a very small, small number of students.
It could vary from year to year, but it's, it's typically a very small number. Okay.
Thank you. Seeing no other cards, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And I will sign this document and then hand that over to our administrator there. And now we will move on to discussion of the night, which is the Superintendent's Proposed 2023-24 Budget. Ms. McCabe?
As we discussed at the work session, the January Board Meeting is when I must present my proposed FY24 operating budget to you. From here, the process continues with any discussion you have this evening, as well as a period of public feedback, including a public budget hearing. You must then adopt your FY24 budget request to submit to the county at the February Board Meeting. I signaled my thinking and the priorities I was including at the December work session. There are no substantive changes from what I presented then. Just as a reminder and to reframe things for this discussion, I'll ask Mr. Burke to briefly walk us through the numbers again, and we'll be prepared to engage in discussion and Q and A.
Good evening, board members. As Ms. McCabe mentioned, no substantive changes since our work session the other week. So I'll try to get through pretty quickly here. You've been distributed the detailed book and certainly can use that to answer any specific questions you have. I'll walk through a quick, where are we going here? Summary of our presentation that we shared before. Again, no significant changes here. So we are expecting, based on our estimates, a increase in state revenues of about 11 and a half million over last year. Some of this due to our enrollment increase, some of this due to the Blueprint continuing to be phased in. We should have more information on this in the next week and a half or so. Once the governor releases his budget, we'll get a little more information. As far as the county on the local side, as we discussed with the commissioners today, there is a planned increase built into their operating plan from last year of 6.7 million and our request based on identified needs in the system of an additional 6.7. So asking for 13.4 million in increased ongoing revenues. So I'll note that's 11.4 million actual increase in revenue from the county year over year. You'll recall that in fiscal year 23, they identified 2 million of one-time funding. So it's really, you know, in total revenue, 11.4 million, but our ongoing request of 13.4. That represents about 6.3% or on the, on the 11 million, about 5.3% increase. So a snapshot of what we see is new revenue for fiscal year 24. Again, the state money, the counties request, some smaller items that we've identified in fund balance and other revenues, a total increase in available ongoing revenues of 26 and a half million. When you get into the details in the book, the net increase in the budget is about 19.2 million. When you back out, last year's use of fund balance and some one-time money, again, from the county, about 7 million combined there. So, but we're kind of looking at what are we seeing and need for available identified needs for fiscal year 24. A snapshot summary of, of where those needs are going, where, where we see a need for new revenue. We've talked about those. And in your slides, I have more detail. Certainly a lot impacted by Blueprint, a lot impacted by inflationary pressures across the system, transportation, the substitute rates that you just discussed. Staffing, we'll go over briefly on the next slide. And identified resources to be able to meet, again, ongoing Blueprint priorities, new priorities there, and employee salary negotiation items that will continue through this spring during the negotiations. A little more detail here on what's contained in each of those line items. No change here outlining the staffing changes, the various detail there. If there's any specific items you'd like to discuss, I'm glad to do that. But no change since we discussed those more in depth during the work session. Again, that's not an all-inclusive list of everything that was identified as, as needs or opportunities. There are many additional items we would love to be able to fund. Some examples of some things coming up that aren't in the budget. Certainly additional Blueprint requirements there. We'll continue to identify needs related to Blueprint. We've discussed before, infrastructure investments in technology and security and maintenance, primarily not included in the budget. We will be, continue to review those items, possibly look at some one-time funding from fund balance. We'll continue to look at that and bring those back to you as we finalize the budget. Kind of a snapshot summary of much of the Blueprint stuff that was outlined earlier today and in other discussions. Again, the fiscal year 24 budget is not completely built around these new ideas within the Blueprint. We'll continue to have these discussions as we implement fiscal year 24 and certainly as we look to fiscal year 25. Fund balance mentioned briefly, spoke about with the commissioners a bit today. Healthy as it stands at year-end fiscal year 22, we'll have some opportunity to look for some uses. Again, we are building in some transportation funding, a little bit of the fuel inflationary increase. We had an opportunity to, to think that fund balance would smooth out an increase there and maybe avoid sort of a spike in our budget. So the, the top two items there are included in fund balance. That's about a million dollars, the bottom line there. Infrastructure, again, we'll continue to monitor. We will gather those items, make some recommendations in our final budget. That would have no net impact on, on the total budget or on revenues. We would identify fund balance as the funding for some additional needs in this area. So we've got a little more time to do that.
Mr. Whistler?
Again, Mr. Burke, I just want to make sure, just make a comment. It's really important for the public watching to understand what fund balance is. It's kind of like our rainy day fund. But it's really important to underscore that this is one-time money and the costs that we're talking about, the 6.7 million we're asking for the commissioners, these are recurring costs. So I'm getting a lot of pushback from some community residents saying, why don't we use our rainy day fund to fund some of these things? But is it not, these are recurring costs. So it's not something really appropriate to use for the rainy day fund.
Correct. So fund balance is a one-time use. Sometimes we can find an opportunity like, you know, do some infrastructure improvement. You know, in a home, in a household, think of kind of a, a savings you might keep on the side, appropriate to, you know, replace a piece of equipment. But you don't want to purchase a new car and say, you know, I'll make my car payments based on this savings account. Probably not the best idea. So available for one time. We're identifying ongoing costs. We already, already have. And, you know, really for sort of fiscal responsibility, we'd want to be able to cover those ongoing costs with ongoing revenues.
Right. And, and we have an agreement with the commissioners to have between a 1 and 5% fund balance rainy day fund kind of thing available for emergencies. So again, I really appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
Ms. Sevigny?
Yeah. So I, I just wanted to state I, I, I fully support this budget request, Superintendent McCabe. The, the original 6.7 million is what had originally been agreed to several years ago, you know, is that, that levelized 3.1% increase that we had worked with the commissioners to, to get to. And then the pandemic happened, right? And so we got back to, you know, we, we were, we took MOE during the pandemic, right? Which actually, you know, we had to make some very difficult decisions for the school system. And one of those things was we said, you know, we had those six positions or seven positions in fund balance that we basically said, we have to have these. So we're going to make the difficult decision to fund them through fund balance. But now we're in a position where we still need those positions. And so we have to roll them into ongoing funds, right? And we had gone back to the commissioners, Commissioner Guarn, for your, for your knowledge. Like, we had gone back to the commissioners after the pandemic saying, you know, like, okay, we took MOE and, and then we were hoping there would be a true-up, right, afterwards? Like, if there were additional funds, if the county didn't get hit quite as badly from, you know, due to economic hits during the pandemic, then we were hoping that we could get some of that back. And it turns out that we didn't. So we kind of missed a year of that 3.1% increase. And now we're basically saying we need that back in order to, to keep the operations going forward. Because that, on top of all the Blueprint requirements is what's, you know, it's put us into this, this position. But the, even with the 13.4, we can't do everything, right? I mean, just as important as what's on the included list is what's on the not included list, right? So this, this, the 13.4 is really just to kind of bare bones of meeting the requirements. of meeting the requirements of blueprint and the needs of the system.
Correct, yeah. And this is just the first year of us starting to implement some of the mandates. This will, this will keep happening each year as we implement more and more of the blueprint legislation. And our ask, while I know, you know, the number may seem shocking, it really is just to keep us operational and meeting those beginning mandates of blueprint. If we didn't have blueprint mandates, we wouldn't be asking for this particular amount of extra funding. So we take this very seriously. We make sure that we are good stewards of the funding that we receive, both from the state and local level. And if we don't receive this, it really will, it will mean a difference in what our students are getting when they come to school every day.
This is a minimalist budget, bare minimum.
And I will say that I support this level of request, but I also would put the caveat on that is I would like to see, and I'd like to get consensus from, if the rest of the board members are in agreement, to kind of see that multi-year projection of what the blueprint requirements are going to be. Because I think that's the only way that we can get to a solution with the commissioners. We really need to, we need to understand that projection and then sit down with the commissioners to try to figure out, how do we, how do we get there? So...
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we've seen these numbers many, many, many times. And I appreciate it.
So I'll mention, we will be back for Budget Public Hearing on the 18th. The budget book will appear online here tonight, following this meeting, for the public and anyone interested. Then we also hold an additional public hearing and a boardwork session, an opportunity to discuss and get your feedback and input into sort of finalizing the proposed budget before we're back at the February meeting to finalize that budget. So a few more opportunities for feedback over the next couple of weeks.
And thank everyone for working on the budget.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yep, I have my budget staff here. And it's a team effort.
Drew, you're in the background. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Herbert. Can we also, again, I just opened my
Oh, yeah, the booklet, yes.
Proposed booklet. But this is always very helpful.
That is nice.
Snapshot for the operating budget. So thanks to the staff that prepared this.
Thank you. All right. Unfinished business or new business? Now, I know Ms. Pataglia has a question. Okay. It's just, it's not new business, but she just has a question.
I was wondering if we could plan a curriculum committee meeting soon? This is the committee that Mrs. Sevigny and I sit on, where they just kind of go over some of the new curriculum pieces or things that have to be implemented. Can we get one of those planned soon regarding requirements of curriculum with blueprint? So that way, we can also, I'm pretty sure probably Curriculum Council is going to have to probably talk about some of these things potentially. So I'd like to get, see if we can get one of those meetings planned soon.
Curriculum Council?
Curriculum Committee.
The CNI Committee?
Oh, okay.
We haven't had one in a long while.
I just don't want to overload us.
I know.
I know I don't want to overload, but I think, especially if it pertains to blueprint and something that the Curriculum Council is going to have to be looking at eventually.
Is that necessary, or?
Are we at that stage yet?
Yeah, right.
I mean, obviously, we can have a meeting at your direction at any point in time, but I don't have any new curricular changes, you know, that I would, you know, that we would be recommending at this time. Our, I think, as Mr. Neal said earlier, our plan is due to the state on March 15th. We anticipate some feedback after that. But at your direction, obviously, we can meet, but I wouldn't be recommending any curricular changes related to blueprint at this time.
Okay.
All right. Well, Alicia brought the question off.
Yeah.
And any changes that we do have would flow through our curriculum revision process that we have as well.
Okay, because this was a question that came up with the Carroll County Parent Group Organization. They had a virtual meeting the other day, and there was one of the questions that came up is like, when is Curriculum Committee going to be picked back up again? They haven't had a meeting in a long time. And I said, you know, I would bring it up. And one of their talks was about blueprint and, you know, how it could imp, pertain to those type of things. And so I said I would, you know, just bring it up to see what can and can't be done.
And that group is actually going to have a talk on blueprint coming up as well as a talk about curriculum and instructional resources.
Yeah, next month, yeah.
So we're planning that, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
At 7:00 PM on Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, FY '24 budget hearing in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. 6:00 PM, Wednesday, February 1st, 2023, FY '24 budget hearing followed by boardwork session in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. At 5:00 PM, Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, board meeting with the public participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia and seconded by Mr. Whistler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. I want Mr. Kyler to see the time.
Quick, text him.